I would like to call our meeting to order.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. We are excited to have so many in the audience, and we welcome everyone who is at home watching. We would like to call our regular Board of Commissioner meeting to order March 21st, 2024 at 7:02 PM.
Ms. Jones, can you call the roll?
Commissioner McDonald.
Present.
Commissioner Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Present.
And before we do our prayer and pledge, I would just like to let everyone know that we have a special guest tonight, an honorary mayor tonight, who is Paisley O'Neal. She's right here beside me, and she was elected as the JA BizTown Mayor of Fairview Elementary School. So she's going to be assisting me tonight. All right, so item number three is prayer and pledge. Vice Mayor Butler?
Board, we're meeting today to quick matters of business. Get our hearts and our minds and spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is mayor's comments. I would like to thank our police officers tonight for keeping us safe. We do have a side door open, just letting y'all know. Tonight, we're just dealing with a little difficulty with our heating and air unit, which we hope to get fixed very soon. So we're, you know, working on that. And just remind everybody, let's use our city-issued devices. I will be using my phone just to do pictures tonight. And I just want to, again, welcome everyone here, and I'm just so excited about Paisley being here with me to assist as the mayor. Item number five is approval of the agenda.
Smoke for approval.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item number five passes 5-0. Item number six, are there any citizens' comments tonight?
None tonight, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven is public announcements, awards, and recognition. The first thing we would like to do is have Mayor Paisley O'Neal give her speech that she gave when she was elected mayor of Fairview Elementary School. The VA, or, sorry, the JA BizTown of Fairview Elementary.
Hi, I'm Paisley O'Neal. This is the speech I did when I was running for mayor for JA BizTown. I did this in front of the whole 5th grade. Good morning. Wait, never mind. Good afternoon. Some of you may know me as Car Rider Line, or some of you may know me. Let's look for your car. Okay, now, let's get started. Hello, friends, community, and Fairview Hawks. First, I would like to start off by thanking my teachers, family, friends, and also classmates for all your support for the last six years. Also, I would like to give a big shout out to all the candidates running for mayor. I believe that all of you would be great in this position, and I believe in all of you to conquer things that have never been conquered. My name's Paisley O'Neal, and I would like to be your JA BizTown mayor. Being a Fairview Hawk has taught me to take care of my schoolwork responsibilities and be organized. I feel that all these qualities will help me be a strong leader, helping everyone through JA BizTown. I will listen to what all my classmates have to say and make improvements throughout our school and JA BizTown. I will make good choices and be in the best interest for all my classmates. I'm kind, confident, and care about what each and every one of you have to say. Being involved in sports and math olympiads has helped me with my academics and leadership skills. I like to take away homework and give extra recess, but I'm not legally obliged to do so. But if I could, I would. But I can give you guys funny jokes like this one. Why did the scarecrow get a promotion? He was outstanding in his field. Now, I have a promise that I can keep. I promise to make sure that everything is fun and fair at BizTown, and I'll help each and every one of you through each and every step of the way. I will guide you and be there for you. Always reach out to me for anything you need. All of us can be there for each other, help each others through the highs and lows. Just a quick question. Are any of you guys from Tennessee? Because I'm the 10 you see. Remember, my name is Paisley O'Neal, and vote for me for JA BizTown mayor.
Okay, if we could all just go down front, and let's get a picture with Paisley.
I love doing stuff like that. It's so exciting.
All right. We have some exciting stuff during public announcements, awards, and recognition tonight. So 7A is city events.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. I was out of town for the Easter egg hunt, but I did get a chance to talk with Richard a little bit, and he said it took he and Bree, I think, 40, 45 minutes to put out 3,000 eggs. And I think it took two minutes for about 400 kids to pick them up. So we're, it was a very good event. I think the kids stuck around and had pictures with the Easter bunny, and I believe it was a very good event, and just appreciate everybody coming out and taking part in the festivities. Next event is the Arts and Crafts Fair, which will be May 11th. If you need any information on that, feel free to reach out to Richard Ross. Thank you.
And I do want to say, our local paper, The Easter Egg Hunt, is on the front page and tells all about it. It's a cool article. Okay, we are so excited. Item 7B is our proclamation for the Fairview Public Library's 60th anniversary. And, let's see. Mr. Gerald, are you going to come up and speak about it, or? Okay, so basically, I'm gonna, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, and then we'll let you talk about it. And then I have a few things I'd like to say after being at the board meeting today, which was really informative to me. I learned a lot. City of Fairview proclamation, Fairview Public Library's 60th anniversary. Whereas in 1963, the Fairview Home Demonstration Club, spearheaded by Dorinda Carlisle and Elizabeth Friar, set out to establish a library in Fairview. And whereas, on April 4th, 1964, the Fairview Home Demonstration Club Library opened with approximately 50 donated books, 50 books on loan from Franklin, and a borrowed card table and lawn chairs in the Fairview laundry overseen by Mary Kleiner, Maxine Beasley, and Catherine Egbert. And whereas, due to growth, the library was relocated to the Fairview Lions Club building, then to the City Hall Meeting Room. And whereas, in 1969, the Fairview Library was renamed the Fairview Public Library and became a branch of the Williamson County Library and a part of the state system. And whereas, in 1973, the library moved to a concrete block building behind City Hall, and Zo Cato was hired as the first librarian. And whereas, in 1980, the Fairview, the library moved to the TVA Field Office trailer in front of City Hall and housed the growing library. And whereas, in 1986, Marilyn Holder was instrumental in starting the Friends of the Fairview Library, served as chairman, chairperson, of the Fairview City Library Committee, and served as a member and chairperson of the Williamson County Public Library Board of Trustees. And whereas, in 1990, on land donated by Dr. Evangeline Bowie and funds from the Library Service and Construction Act through the Tennessee State Library and Archives, with matching funds from the City of Fairview, the Williamson County Public Library, and contributions raised by the Fairview Family and Community Education Group and Friends of Fairview Public Library. The present building was built to house the library with 2,300 books and circulation of 14,000 books yearly. And whereas, the Fairview Public Library is now celebrating its 60th anniversary. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Fairview, Tennessee, does hereby proclaim April 4th, 2024, as Public Library Day in the City of Fairview, Tennessee, and congratulates the library for its ongoing service to the City of Fairview.
This is a second chance. I've had to talk to this group. I came here several months ago and reviewed the history of the library. This is a community effort. This was started within the community. You know, I'm amazed that it started with a few books on a shelf in the laundromat, actually graduated to the concrete block building, which we didn't mention in the proclamation, but had been intended to be the city jail, and stayed in jail for seven years before it moved to the trailer. This is a big deal for us. The Friends of the Fairview Library is an active group that raises funds and contributes both work and funding to the library as needs arise. The Williamson County Library, as our parent, if you will, is remarkable. That system includes five satellites, and Fairview figures prominently in that. We've got a lot of good stuff going on with this. I'd just like to point out, our library director for Fairview, Philip McDonald, is here. Our director of the Williamson County Library System, Jessica Jeffers, is here, and a number of our friends that came to help us celebrate this. We hope that all of you will have an opportunity to come on Saturday, April 6th, to help us celebrate with an open house and have some interesting things going on with that. Philip, would you like to add anything?
I would just like to say how much we appreciate all your help, all your support. We are always there for you. You all have supported us through these 60 years. It's a great honor to serve the people of Fairview, and we look forward to, you all stop by anytime during the open house. Around 12:30, we will have some recognition of the people involved, and there will be refreshments. And please, if you need anything, all you have to do is ask me. And thank you all very much for all your support. Thanks.
Jessica?
Before we get a picture with the group, I'm so excited that several members of the Friends of the Library have come, and I was excited to be able to attend a board meeting that normally they, it's kind of funny, I probably shouldn't say this, but they said they had the board meetings in Maine, and I was like, wow, that's a long way away. But they were talking about the Maine Library in Franklin, so anyway, I know that's kind of silly, but I was like, wow, Maine's a long way away. But anyway, so the Maine Library is in Franklin, and the board came to our library and had a meeting today. I learned so many cool things. So first of all, everybody, the library cards are free. So this is what a library card looks like, and everyone from our community can go and get a library card. And when you get a library card, you're issued a welcome packet from the library, and inside the welcome packet, they have fundraisers, and one of those is like book sales and bake sales, and you get $5 in this, $5 off of a book at the book sale when you get your library card and get your welcome packet. So one thing we learned today is our library, through the funding, can you help me with this, the packets? And y'all talked about this today, so I really wanted to bring this up because this excited me. The funding was a $2,000 grant through Dollar General, Dollar General stores?
That's correct.
Okay, so basically what this is, it's a kit, and it, you know, homeschoolers would, you know, benefit greatly from this, but anybody really would. And it's something that the kids can do with their families. And it's like a backpack that's full of different things that they can get from the library. And our library here has a backpack that's about the United States, and botany and art history, but the Maine Library has French, animal habitats, botany, music composers, anatomy. And then the Nolansville Library has music composers, animal habitats, Spanish. Leapers Fork has music composers, Bethesda geology, and College Grove is ancient civilizations. If you want one of the other ones, it can be requested and brought to our Fairview Library so that the kids can check those out. But they have, here's a picture. It's like a backpack that has all the different information in it. And, you know, just listening to the, you know, what was talked about with filling these backpacks, it's not just books. It's like, we're geology, it has rocks, and, you know, there's just different items in the backpack for learning. So that's really exciting to me. It's just really neat that we even go beyond the books and, you know, go into more learning. And I thought the, you know, if the parents with their children learned about the foreign languages, I thought that would be really cool. But I just encourage everyone, you know, to go out and get a library card because they don't cost anything, and just go visit our library and see how exciting and everything it has to offer. Also, I would like to encourage businesses and individuals to get involved. It's very inexpensive. You can become an individual member of the library, and also the businesses can become members of the library as well. Also, I would just encourage the businesses, especially who can, you know, just help out, give more than the $50. You know, just help with this and just bring something to our community that's very important, and that's literacy. So I would like to, is there anything else anyone would like to say, or is there anything I missed that maybe someone thinks that we need to hear before we get a picture? I love pictures. Because we're going to put this on the front of the paper, and we're going to encourage everyone to donate so that we can even provide more to our community through the library.
Mayor, I'll just say real quick, I have two little girls that their top, one of their top three things in the world is to go to the Fairview Library and renew their books. So thank you, guys, for making a special place for the children. It's awesome.
Oh, and also, that reminded me, thank you, Vice Mayor. When I was in the bathroom at the library, you know how, like when you're in the bathroom, they have the doors, and on the back of the door, it has things that, you know, you can find out what's going on? Well, it was really, you know, exciting to me to find out all the different things that are happening in March. So if you want to find that out, just go to the website, and it will tell you, you know, the different times that there's reading and, you know, spend the night with your stuffed animal and stuff like that. It just sounds like so much fun. So, and then, like we were talking about, it's up on the screen. I encourage everyone to come to the open house and just check out our library here in Fairview. Anyone else from the board? Good? Okay. Anyone who is friends of the library or with, you know, the board or anything, just come on up, and we'll get a picture with the whole group. Item eight is staff comments and monthly reports. A is community service report. Mr. Greer.
Our public service group this month, for the month of February, they replaced numerous street signs and speed limit signs throughout the city, completed the monthly leaf removal service, a total of 118 bags. They mulched and cleaned out flower beds at the Fairview Health Department, installed new control boxes in the traffic lights at Fairview Boulevard in Adele and Fairview Boulevard in Chester Road, patched numerous potholes throughout the city from our wonderful January snowstorm, swept out and mopped the Triangle School, and they cleaned up and removed the tree, a tree from the roadway of Sugar Maple and Sweet Gum Road. Our planning and codes department completed 213 inspections. We issued 31 residential building permits. As several of you have noticed, it's pretty hard not to notice, City Center has began working on their property, installing their silt fence. We are looking to have official groundbreaking early in the summer, potentially late spring. We had 40 projects that were submitted to our department for review. And then, just a reminder to all the citizens, signs painted on or attached to trees, fence posts, rocks, or other natural features, telephone poles or utility poles are prohibited within the city. We have seen quite a few of those pop up over the last, I don't know, two or three months that we've removed. And so if you see any signs that are attached to telephone poles, please reach out to the codes department, and we will get those removed. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. I've had several calls about people tacking signs onto telephone poles and different things. So like Ethan said, that's, you know, that's illegal, so don't do that. Is that all? Anything from the board for Mr. Greer? Item 8A is police department report. Chief Humphries?
Good afternoon. A quick little report here. We'll go to the first slide. We're blessed that we're still at 27 staffing, no turnover. That's a good thing. We're about to get our two in the academy out. Next Thursday, they graduate. They have a few things left of their field training, and then you will see them on the streets, so we're glad to see that. Over time, just a little bit of an uptick for the month, and training hours significantly increased. We were able to do a lot of different training for the month, good quality training, interview interrogation, women in police command, child abduction response, street crimes, defensive tactics instructor, basic firearms, basic handcuffing, baton, the OC pepper spray training, less lethal shotgun. So we had a very busy month in training. We got a little good training hours for the month. Next slide. Calls for service went up quite a bit, from 7:25 to 9:44. We tend to see that when the weather breaks and gets a little warmer. Activity is more in the city, and we incur a few more things. Next. The arrests for the month, about consistent, similar numbers, down to 68, two domestics, four DUIs. Our guys have been working heavily on the DUI traffic, trying to keep the streets safe, and have had quite a bit of success in that. Drug charges up 17, I mean, down to 17. Again, they've been pushing a lot of interdiction-type stops, trying to make those cases also. Zero thefts for the month. Citations up to 153. Traffic access down. Property damage down to 17. Injuries at three. And again, we will have to report no fatalities in the City of Fairview. Next slide. We had nothing to report in public relations. We'd not scheduled anything, but I did get a picture of my officers with an Easter bunny. So apparently, we did participate in the Easter egg hunt, and we're there. So, and from their reports, it all went well there, and nothing additional report. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you to your officers who let the kids sit in the police cars. I put a picture of that on Facebook, and they said, what was that about? And I said, they were just letting the kids sit in the police cars, okay? You know? They love that. All right, our next item is 8C, fire department report. Chief Hughes.
Good evening, Major and Commissioners. This is the fire department report for February 2024. We ran 116 calls during the month. It was up from last year. Significant events, we had 17 overlapping calls. Again, that's where we're out on one call when another one is dispatched. We had three incidents where a fire was extinguished, had two grass or field fires, and one in the city. We had six mutual or automatic aid responses to surrounding jurisdictions. Our average response time was down a little bit, and our time on scene was down a little bit. Again, to report emergencies, your first call should be 911. We're still getting calls at the station for people to report fires or traffic accidents. February call breakdown, again, our February call breakdown, again, our medical and rescues are still going to lead the way. That's the national average. And then, we have hazardous conditions and things like that that seem to be up there every month, too. Fires are going to be a low problem nature for us. Next slide. So, our heat map, again, it, first of the year, it's just showing up, the hotspots are still all the same hotspots. They're not as big as they are at the end of the year, but I would say in December, those hotspots are still going to be in the same areas, they're just going to be much redder. Fire prevention activities, we had 14 fire and life safety occupancy inspections and follow-ups. Again, nothing to report, a few minor corrective action notices were issued. We did 10 pre-fire plans were completed, one public education event at Fairview Elementary School. We installed six smoke alarms for city residents. If any city residents need smoke detectors, we're still part of the state grant, we still have plenty at the station and we can ask for more if we use them. I'll just call the number or you can go online and fill out the form and we'll schedule for someone to come out and put those smoke detectors up for you. February training, we did 337 hours of training for the month of February. They were clockwise, it's the crews completing some pump and operator training. We did have a follow-up meeting with our architect and engineering firm for Station 32. It's coming along very well. In the picture, we're being in the floor plan they came up with, so hopefully in April, we'll have something finalized for you guys to take a look at. Any questions?
There was a, there was a question that came up at the board, the board meeting at the library, and I think I know the answer to this, but just for the record, if there were an incident, either police or fire, at a county building.
We respond.
Right. It's on city property, so that question was brought up and I thought, I didn't answer because I'm not on the board, but I felt like it, that our city responds even though it's a county building on city property.
Yes, ma'am.
Or, I mean.
Yeah. County, it's county property, we're first.
County property inside of the municipality.
Inside, but we're first deal on that. If anything were to happen at the schools, we respond, the county would respond also, but we're first duty response on those.
But like the library is county on, so that's county property that it's on, right? County? Okay. So, but our Fairview city police and fire would respond?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight D is the finance report. Mr. Darty.
Thank you, Mayor. Commission, I'm going to email this out next week. Appreciate you, your patience. I've took a little bit of leave and ready to get back at it and I will get everything reconciled and out next week. You may move on to the city manager.
Sure.
Brush pickup will start the first Tuesday in April and be going on the routes. Unfortunately, you can't see your route right now on our website. We've had a technical issue with our, with our maps, but we, they're working on that and they should be cleared up soon. So, as soon as you, as soon as we get that cleared up, you'll be able to see what your zone is and when they'll be coming by. But it does start first Tuesday in April for brush pickup and shipping. The next thing is, amen to us, the city hall and fire department being heating and air unit going, going down. I feel like it may be time to move on to a conventional system. It's going to be extremely expensive to fix the old system, plus it's kind of like an old car where it's starting to beat us to death with repair costs. The, and there's really not a lot of, a lot of folks that even work on those anymore, the geothermal. I need the board's direction. We really don't need to wait on a huge, long bid process. We've reached out to four contractors who, I believe most of them are going to come by and give us bids tomorrow. I would like to move forward with this as quickly as possible to get this fixed and then maybe bring amended budget to the board. This would fall under expenditures we could use under the bond, so it wouldn't affect operating costs. So, I'm, I'm just, just want to let you know where we are. We've been kind of living on borrowed time. We've been, we had one pump go out years ago. We've been, been going, I guess, for the last four or five years on one and it's gone out. So, just want to make sure y'all are good if I get this fixed. And if you want to give me a limit or if, I'm thinking my rough estimate on what it would probably minimally cost to get our, our current system fixed is 60,000 plus. And I think we're looking somewhere in the 100, 150 for a whole new system for upstairs and downstairs. But I'm, those are all rough estimates. And if y'all would rather me email you what the quotes I got or if, I just hate to wait two weeks to move forward on anything.
The little bit, since you, you know, since I found out about this this morning, the little bit of investigating I've done, I don't see that it's feasible to repair what we have. I think we need to go to a conventional system. These geothermal units, after checking with some professionals on that, the parts, just to get the parts, I think you're going to be down for a while. So, in my opinion, I think we should go with a new system and I, I think sooner than later is better. So, in my opinion, you know, we'll hear from the rest of the board, obviously, but I think you should take bids tomorrow, pick someone and let's move, move forward with it. Anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
Just, how old is the system? Is it as old as the building? Is it built when the building, when it come at the building and it was originally?
I believe so. I don't have anything to contradict that, but it is old.
Yes, it was put in when the building was built.
About 23 years.
23 years old.
Yeah, it was just more for information sharing to, you know, if it was six years old and we're replacing it, I think some people might question that, but 23 years and it's a system, it's hard to find parts. I mean, it's kind of not a lot we can do of it.
Everybody agree we, Tom, take bids tomorrow and just can move forward with it?
Well, not at an open-ended dollar figure. I think we need to know what it is. I mean, I, I have no problem setting a limit not to go over, but if the cheapest one, if he's thinking 150 and the cheapest one comes in at 278, I don't know that we're prepared to do that without a special call meeting. I don't think we have to wait two weeks. I think we can call a special meeting and.
Yeah, I think Tom.
Have it tomorrow at lunchtime if we need to.
He's looking for some guidance. So, the first thing is, do we try to fix what we have or do we replace it? And so, I, I hear all of you saying probably replace it. And then he's looking, he's going to go ahead and get bids and get the work started before bringing a resolution back to you to actually pay for it, which you're going to have to approve. So, he doesn't want to go too far out over his skis. So, if what you're saying is we're comfortable with anything less than $200,000 to replace the system, you bring us a resolution back that says that, then we're good. But if it's going to be more than that based on the bids, we may need to have a special call meeting for you all to approve it and have another discussion. Is that what I'm, is that a pretty?
That sound fair?
So moved.
Less than?
Accurate, so, now, we're not voting on it.
No, we're not voting.
Are you all comfortable with that?
Less than $200,000 or we would have to have a special call meeting to approve more than that and.
In any case, you're going to get a resolution back spending the money and he's, there may have to be money moved in the budget to pay for it, but, but he, he just doesn't want to get over his ski. So, if you have something to say about it, let him know now before he starts skiing.
I say if it goes over the 150 he thinks was the top.
I don't, I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that because he's guessing at 150. I think if we make it.
Were you guessing or did they tell?
That's, that is a very, very rough.
That is a rough guess. I think we should set it 200.
I think it'll at least cost that, maybe a little less, maybe more. I would probably feel comfortable 200 or under, but I could email everybody and say, "Hey, this is my best price. Am I good to go?" Or whatever, whatever y'all feel comfortable with.
You're comfortable with 200 then?
You're getting four or five quotes, you're getting, I think that would be the goal, just send out, say, "Here's the one I've chosen. If someone thinks it's astronomical, we'll call a special meeting and we'll get in here and talk about it." But otherwise, that 200 or so, you know, it's got to be done.
In case you're going to have to approve it, but, but by doing this, we're going to allow him to get, get the bids.
Yeah.
And potentially get started, so we don't have a bunch of staff here either sweating or freezing.
I'm just sad it's gone out. I was the mayor and cut the ribbon when we opened the building, so it lasted a while.
But 23 years is a pretty good.
Not bad.
Pretty good stretch, I think.
Mayor, if I, I got one question.
Sure.
Tom, did you, you said that you had a couple different companies coming tomorrow potentially giving you a quote. Is that quote strictly for replacement or are they going to also take a look at it and see if there is a replacement cost that they quote you on that as well? Or a replacement of parts and fixing the situation?
Everyone coming that I've got so far is for replacing.
Okay.
The only company I know of that does anything with geothermal is Hiller, not Hiller.
Henry Drilling.
Henry Drilling.
Sorry, Henry Drilling. And they, I mean, every, everything on this, you've got all kinds of valves and all kinds of stuff that I just, that have not even been touched over the years. I just see things one after another probably coming up.
With the difficulty of acquiring parts, I just think we should move on to conventional and not, you know.
Yeah, I, I agree. I guess my only, if it was my home and this was me making a personal decision, I would just, I guess I would, I'm curious if, has anyone professional looked at it to say exactly what's wrong with it? I'd hate for it to be, end up being something small. We can assume it's something big, probably is.
Oh, he knows what it is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Henry Drilling came out.
You did have someone look at it that confirmed the issue.
Yeah, they came out last Friday.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. So, to keep us all on the same page, is Tom okay under 200,000?
Under 200,000, replace the unit.
Whoa, whoa.
Like, do I have head nods from everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so he's going to do that. If that, if it changes, he'll, he'll send an email to me and to you all. And if we need to have a special call meeting because it's 205,000, then we can, we can talk some more. But otherwise, he's going to start and he'll bring you back a resolution funding it and for you to approve it officially at the next meeting. Okay? Everybody good? Okay. All right.
That's all.
Okay. All right. Item number nine, consent agenda A, meetings from March 7, 2024, Board of Commissioner regular meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item nine A passes 5-0. Item 10, old business, we have no old business tonight. Item 11, new business, 11A, resolution 12-24, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between Williamson County and the city of Fairview for cooperation in the provision of a healthcare clinic. Mr. Darty.
Thank you. This is just an interlocal agreement that comes due, I believe, every three years. This is collaboration between us and the county for them bringing the clinic out here. We provide a $15,000 cash donation plus some maintenance at the clinic.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. 11A passes 5-0. 11B, discussion, request for financial assistance in widening Fairview Boulevard for the access to Schmidt Coffee Incorporated. Mr. Darty.
Thank you, Mayor. The, this is not a request from the city. This is, this has been a letter we received requesting the city to help with widening the road. They, they had to get some studies done and once those studies came back, T-Dot told them in order for them to put their business there, they would have to widen the road. Is everybody familiar with, does it?
We'll, we'll, we'll call, yes, we'll call you up as soon as the report's done.
This is a letter from Thomas B. Cahill Attorney at Law, which you all should have in your packet. It's 11B. And I, after talking with the city attorney, reached out and said it would be, have to be something that was brought to the board and this is something that we felt like the city wanted, wanted or should do. So, anyway, I will leave this decision in your hands, but I just wanted to bring this to your attention and that it has been requested.
Or, I think it'd be appropriate if you're willing to hear from the, the person that sent us the letter, they, I think they have a comment they want to make and then you can discuss whether you have any appetite to assist with, with the request.
Okay. Will the applicant come forward and just state your name and your address?
John Schmidt. Well, I'm in Nolansville, so it's 181 Broad Green Lane, Nolansville. My wife and I were looking to start a business here in Fairview and then move here. And so, we started that process and it's been a little, it's been a learning experience, but in that process, we did find out that the requirement would be a center turn lane from T-Dot, like Tom mentioned. They're requiring that at this point due to a traffic study.
Can you speak a little closer?
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry, I, it's just a little hard to hear.
Oh, no problem.
There you go.
And so, the outcome of that, and then I did some estimates with some contractors without doing the actual surveys to determine, you know, accuracy, but an estimate, kind of like with the air conditioner, it's about $300,000. And, you know, being a small, like just a family-owned business, we don't have the funds to make that road repair to put our business there. So, that's why we're here. I know it's a big ask, but it's a make it or break it for us. We've invested a lot of money in other engineering and survey costs. The, the traffic study was actually like a last minute thing and it just kind of threw a wrench in the works. So, we had already spent quite a bit of money, our investment to get a business started. So, I'm kind of here right now to see where I'm going to be sleeping tonight because that's my wife.
You need to speak, you need to speak from the stand and state your name and address.
Have a police officer bring those forward, please.
Schmidt Coffee is just our name, but it is a franchise business. It's called Scooters and it's coffee and smoothies and drinks, some food products. But they're all like locally owned businesses, family-owned businesses.
So, you said road repair. Is it a repair or, can you describe to me or to all of us, like exactly what needs to happen with the road?
So, currently, from about the Taco Bell on Fairview Boulevard till, I think it's Peking Court, there's not a turn lane, a center turn lane, sorry. And it came out during the process of us trying to purchase a piece of property right next to the Taco Bell to put our business that according to the current traffic scenario, it's going to require a turn lane. Based on the outcome of the study, though, it's, it's a current problem, which I've kind of observed that. which I've kind of observed that people turning into the liquor store or even into Taco Bell, there's, there's not a stack for the cars to stack up to turn if they're making a left. So it kind of exists there with the existing businesses from the urgent care to the Taco Bell. Um, but because the study came from me trying to buy that property, it was kinda, sounded like it was incumbent on me to pay for the, it's not, it's a little bit of road widening, but it's mostly just to put a center turn lane right there with minimal widening.
So this is, um, just a, a drive-through?
Right, it's a drive-through business of drinks, like coffee and smoothies.
So basically, cars would stack to drive through and not park to come in?
Right, they don't park to come in. But the property, the building is only about 700 square feet, little under that. So really, the property is the stack. There's a lot of cars that'll fit around the building as, as they go through the drive-through. So it's not that there'll be cars sitting out on Fairview Boulevard. It's just that when they wanna make a left, right now, according to the study, you know, as people try to make a left, people back up behind them. And the minimum number that T-Dot allows is five movements, but there's like 29. Um, you guys live here, you, I'm sure you've seen this, the traffic and how when somebody's making a left, it gets a little difficult there, so.
So it's a single lane instead of a double lane where if someone wanted to go around and out to the right or to the left, it, it's just a single lane?
It's a single, yeah. And, and there, there's obviously throughout most of Fairview Boulevard, there's that tenor, center turn lane. But there is a section, it's about a half a mile long between Peking Court or around the O'Reilly's or so, all the way to the Taco Bell that didn't get widened yet.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, did your T-Dot representative, uh, give you any indication why the other businesses has been alone there, haven't, why wouldn't they weren't required to do so?
Yes, it's, it's, it's a combination of things. It's a T-Dot road, but it's, um, it, the, this, the city asked me to do a traffic study, kind of as, just as I was about to submit for my permits. And once that traffic study was done, even though it was a city request, T-Dot now knows about it. So they're not gonna let anything happen there unless it gets done.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner Hall, it really has to do with the number of turning movements because there are so many for this type of business. It's constant in and out. It's not a, it's not a restaurant or a sit-down coffee place.
But within a matter of feet, there's an apartment complex that several go in and out of there, both directions.
Patrick, grab that, Patrick, grab that mic, grab that mic. Sorry. It's just hard to hear.
Oh, it's a T-Dot road, a T-Dot, T-Dot requirement. So it's the number of turning movements in and out and the stacking of the cars, I think, that precipitated the requirement of a turn lane.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could we get clarification from Ethan, maybe on, the traffic study is not just a city requirement, since it's on a state highway, it's, it's, it comes from the state that we need to have it done, correct?
It didn't, in this process, I'm sorry, just, just to share, it didn't come up.
So, uh, to give a little bit of background on this, I had several meetings, uh, with the applicant throughout their process since I've been here. In their letter, they had a pre-application meeting with our previous staff prior to their departure. And within our zoning ordinance, we have, uh, traffic, if I can pull it up here. We have access management regulations that allow for, certain projects require a traffic impact study. This project, in my opinion and our opinion of our staff, required a traffic impact study. And that is available, um, as one of the options. One second, I can read out. So requirement for traffic study, in this case, uh, the city planner may require a traffic impact study for any development, which in the opinion of the city engineer requires it. So I spoke with Will and Curtis with Gregson Maloney to discuss this as well. In our opinion, we felt that a traffic study was needed for this, warranted. Uh, prior to their application coming in, their application was submitted in September, I believe, um, for their site plan, their commercial site plan that would've gone to the planning commission. Um, since then, there's been, um, they submitted their traffic study with their application. We had subsequent meetings with T-Dot where T-Dot advised them, your traffic study warrants a center turn lane. During those, uh, meetings with T-Dot, I believe at one point the question was asked, would T-Dot assist with the funding of this? T-Dot said, we would expect the developer to provide this, uh, as T-Dot should. And they do with every other project. And they said you could ask the city for, for help, uh, financially with this if you felt so needed. So I believe that is what has driven the process to this point.
If we had not had the traffic study done, if we'd not asked them to do that, what would've been the process for T-Dot to have given them a road cut? Because I know we can't give it to them. They would have to come from the state.
They would've had a, had to have a driveway permit from T-Dot to be able to access Highway 100 from that. And I'm not completely sure what's all involved in that. Um, I believe a traffic study based on the, the guidance T-Dot put out in February of 2023 would've been required from T-Dot for that driveway entrance permit.
And I'll say it for the record, whether, you know, this, this letter from Mr. Cahill, I, I guess it's fine. I, it didn't wax too kindly with me because bottom line is, T-Dot was gonna require this turn lane, whether or not Ms. Ms. Totty advised about it. It was there to be, the traffic management plan states that it's required and applicants required to understand and read the requirements. And T-Dot was required one way or another. By having Tom put this in front of you, I'm not in any way suggesting that this is the city's obligation or the city should even entertain it. But it was a request, uh, by a potential business owner, and so it's before you to discuss.
Mayor, I have another question.
Yes.
Uh, Ethan, how long is, did T-Dot give you any idea how long this reg- regulation had been in place?
Their latest guidance that they put out for traffic impact studies came out February of 2023.
So it's a recent thing? Okay. Just curious.
Mayor?
Yes.
The proposed turn lane, um, would it service and only service your location? Or would it, what, what other?
It would service-
I mean, I don't know that, how, how long it is, how big it is. Like, I'm just trying to get an idea of what serviceability that turn lane would bring to the city.
From my understanding of the length that's required, it would service the Taco Bell all the way to just the, maybe a little past the, uh, urgent care.
That lot's right between the Taco Bell and the urgent care, is that right?
Yeah, that's right.
How many of these locations do you operate?
Well, I don't know if I operate any of them now. This is our attempt at starting a business, yeah. And we went with the franchise that we thought was a, a good choice.
What, did you get an exact figure for how much this was gonna cost?
No, and, uh, because, um, I had put, be- because the traffic study came up late in the process, I, I didn't see any reason not to move forward. So I put quite a bit of money into engineering and other surveys and land, et cetera. But, uh, when it came to, when this came up, I, I didn't want to spend another, it's $30,000 for me to do the surveys on the road to determine exactly what the estimate would be. But I was able to give enough to, to contractors to get bids. And they're anywhere from, the, the work itself would be about 250 to 275 in their estimation without having done the surveys. And then the surveys are 30,000. That's the unfortunate side for me. We, we put about 70 in before we realized that this was an issue. So for us as a small, you know, just a family trying to start a business, it was a big chunk of our investment.
You've already closed on the property?
No, no, because we can't. If, uh, the bank, even the lender wouldn't, wouldn't let that happen without knowing that we could put the business there. They know what the business can support. This business is, it's Scooters Coffee. It's new to Tennessee, but it's big in like Nebraska and it's growing and they're adding all the time. So the bank is aware of the potential, but they weren't comfortable with adding another 300,000 to my loan to cover the road.
What, uh, what prompted this letter from an attorney in Illinois?
It was just, we're running out of time. It's not really a threat. And I know it probably read like sour grapes. I apologize for that. But it was just to try to get attention, because I had left a couple of messages and, and we were trying to send emails but weren't getting responses. I just thought, well, I'll just ask the attorney guy if he'll put his name on it, see if that'll get, and it worked. So here I am.
So is he, is he your personal attorney? Is he an attorney for Schmidt Coffee or attorney for Scooters?
No, he's just a commercial real estate, commercial real estate attorney. I don't have a, an attorney, because I'm not a litigious person. But I just thought having a name on it would, you know, get attention, so. That's why I made it on the agenda.
Well, I've, I will say to the board that I have heard of doing tax breaks for things to come to the city, but never just outright, basically write a check to a developer.
How many employees will you have?
Little over 25. And, and they're part-time, though, because they're baristas, you know, mostly, and then a manager, um, an assistant manager, things like that.
Mayor, I have another question for staff. If, just from a professional standpoint, thinking about 100, where you have a center lane and then the center lane would go away and then it would come back again and Highway 100 would be wide, is there any issues just from a pure planning standpoint, from engineering? I know you're not our engineer, but.
Currently, Highway 100 does do that, uh, particularly in front of this location. Uh, it tapers down at their proposed entrance to this property. I don't believe that's anybody's long-term plan of Fairview is to have a bunch of three lane to two lane, back to three lane. Uh, even T-Dot, that's not in their long-term vision of Highway 100 for Fairview. So, um, no, I don't believe that's the best interest.
It is what it is. And I, I, I guess the reason I asked the question is just one more thing to consider. If we're gonna be spending city money on something, is it being done how we would do it if the city had looked into doing something like that? Or we just, I feel like personally, if the city was gonna put money into that area or had the ability to, it is state road, we've been pushing for it, hasn't happened. But it would probably be more than just a handful of feet of a turn lane. I would think there'd be more of a scope to the project, I would think, if we were gonna do something like that. But that's just my opinion.
If I could just add, I know that the section that they're requiring me to do doesn't require any eminent domain. You know, it's, it's, the road is already wide enough. It just needs a little bit of additional blacktop and, and all of the, the lines changed. But, um, to your point, if you go further towards like the O'Reilly, I don't know if that starts to run into properties. That might be why it didn't happen in the past.
So what you just said, the road is wide enough, but there's just a little extra pavement and striping?
Yeah, if you can picture-
And that's gonna be $300,000?
Yeah, I was surprised too. But, um, so if you can picture that currently there's, as mentioned by Ethan, a taper and that's where there's stripes. Cars currently at the existing businesses, they stack there anyway, but that's not acceptable as far as, you know, the requirements. So, um, there is enough road and enough own, or right of way owned by, by T-Dot, I guess you could say, to let us widen the road a little bit at one end. There is water that goes underneath, so of course there's a little additional cost to, to extend that and put the road over it. And, uh, T-Dot's requirements are that you don't just kinda chunk up the lines that are there now. You have to cut down into the road, dig it up and report and then do lines. So that kinda added to the cost. And again, these are just estimates that I have, um, from a couple of contractors that were gonna possibly build the business for me and do the driveway and all that.
Mayor, I have another question, please.
Yes.
So, we have the space there, but no sidewalks or anything like that's gotta be cut up to, to?
I don't believe so, but if, if there is, it'd be at the very end. And again, it just depends on how you'd like to proceed. Like, if you wanna keep going, you know, that whole, it's point, is .40 miles of a strip that's not done. So I don't know if you'd wanna go past that, but if you, if you just do what T-Dot is requiring for a business to go in that current commercial property, it would, it would do, um, Taco Bell, my business, and then the liquor store across the street, and then just about, um, help the urgent care at the end. Yeah.
I'm just surprised that, that urgent care wasn't asked to do that years ago.
Right, well, I think Ethan just pointed it out. It just became a thing.
That's the reason I asked for the date a while ago.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I own a small bills, a small business here in town. I sympathize with you. But you've got to understand that $300,000 is not coming from the city. It's coming from our taxpayers.
Right.
We have to be good stewards of their money.
Right. Well, I, you know, just being a small business person, like you said, I just, it, it's a big hit, hard lesson learned, you know, to, to be here, to have to ask for something like this. That piece of commercial property, even though, yes, mine is a drive-through business, based on the number of movements, I don't think anything can go there without that center turn lane. So, uh, and I don't know if that means that the seller should consider selling it for a lot lower, but that's about that 300,000. I'll tell you that, that he was asking 595, so that's like almost paying 150% for the property just to put a business there.
I would say we don't know, but in the future, it will be widened.
Right.
So if they were to have to hold it until it's widened to do something like this, then just saying it will be widened in the future.
Gotcha.
And the state will cover that cost.
Yeah, and that's, that's the downside. It's, it's the state.
But we just don't know when.
Right.
It's just this being taxpayers' money, we're, it's just, it's hard because it's so much and we have to be good stewards of their money and.
Yeah, that was the lesson that I learned, that I, I grew up thinking that municipal taxes paid for the road improvements all the time. I didn't know that it was a developer requi- you know, situation. I didn't realize that. But now that we're in this situation, we've kinda put so much of our investment capital into it. It looks like, you know, we're gonna take the hit and there's no way out.
I do know of other, um, maybe not business, commercial, that they have put in their own turning lanes.
Yeah.
It's not a small coffee shop, but they have put in their own turning lanes and pretty much, uh, not sure about, you know, the February 2023 thing, but I, I feel like they were required to do that because it was just, you know, because of the traffic involved.
Yeah, be- before that regulation, there's been other regulations. So, uh, you know, off-site improvements made by businesses on state roads or, or, or any roads are common. So turn lanes are common requirements depending on the impact that the- So turn lanes are common requirements depending on the impact that the business causes and necessitates for their need. So if, if it was a different type of use that didn't require so many turning movements, then T-Dot may have a different, different regulation. But even if this was a city road and this was a business, you know, the TIS may require a, a turning lane. And so that would typically be the responsibility of the person making the improvement and benefiting from the improvement largely. But this is not an unusual situation. I think what's unusual is that this is a small, a small business or a, you know, a new franchise and the, the cost is a lot to cover when you're selling coffee, for sure.
One more thing.
But you guys would really like the coffee. I'm just telling.
One more thing I'd like to say, Mayor.
Yes.
All the improvements is there now, I believe. Stuart, didn't Walmart pay for all of that?
Believe so.
Yeah. All the widening and sidewalks and everything was paid to Walmart.
Me versus Walmart, though. I don't have those kind of pockets.
That's what I was trying to get to point across.
So they, you know, it's a point eight four acres. Maybe somebody with deeper pockets would want to put something there. I'm just saying it seems like it comes with a price tag and I don't know if it's consideration to think of the commercial property values that, you know, the sale of that lot might create, but I had to ask, you know.
Yeah, I'll just echo what the mayor said, that I think we all sympathize with you. I mean, it's not like anybody's taking joy in, in it. It's just, you know, it's not, we're walking down the sidewalk and we see someone who needs a hand and we're just helping people, you know? We're, we're representing the city and we have to keep, keep that in mind. Yeah.
The additional businesses, does it services, would that help at all? I mean, it, it does alleviate the same issue that exists now with the ones that are there.
For me personally, there's a few aspects to it. One, when businesses come in or developments come in to the city and if they're going to have an impact, they, they do foot the bill and they, most time they are the ones paying for that. I worry about the perception it would set, that we're just picking and choosing what businesses we want to financially assist. And I think you could make an argument if it was a massive, you know, 150 jobs or something like that to the community, we could maybe justify it. It's just, it's just hard personally.
Right. Too small to do it. I don't know if there's anything else to say.
Businessman, I'm very sorry for you.
Appreciate it.
I need a motion.
Just discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. I see now, discussion. Item 11C, discussion dispatch fees, Police Chief Humphries.
Before I go into this, I can offer some insight into the decision to go to the conventional HBA system. The boiler room or geothermal is downstairs and we were present in the squad room, the tech was there. He came out laughing at our system of how old and it's not that it would be problematic to get them over time. He didn't even know if he could get the product, the, the part. That was what he, he told us when he come out, that he didn't even know if he could get the part for that. So I, I think that you could rest easy, that, that probably is a good decision at this point.
That's what I was told as well.
Right, right. Um, I apologize for not getting this information in your packets earlier. This has kind of been a work in progress. We, we do appreciate that you have, you let a lot of decisions be staff-driven, that you, you believe that we will vet things, the processes, prices and things that we do, we bring those, those choices to you. And this was in, that we're responsible financially, we're making responsible decisions for those tax dollars, just like you spoke in this, this last gentleman's presentation. And we were posed with a increase in dispatch fees. This, and when we talk about the dispatch, I'll reference Kristi Borden, she's over 911, Bill Jorgensen, who's over the emergency management over there. We had most of our, our communication back and forth with those two people. So we received an initial request, which is the first page you have here, stapled together, and I highlighted in, in pink her correspondence. And you have every correspondence back and forth, everything we prepared with the exception of a few emails were just, that were just agreeing on meeting times. So if you'll look at, this was a, her request to us, and if you look at the second page on that, then the request for Fairview's dispatch services, of which we paid 127,244 dollars last year, was going to increase by 102% to 256,985 dollars. And if you'll look in this column over, about the second or third column, a number of personnel required for each staff, they rate that as an FTE, five FTEs is one position, one person sitting at a console operating. And you'll notice that last year I had 2.5. That means that my dispatcher is working my console as a police dispatcher and we share that with Nolansville. So each of us share 2.5 to make up that five FTE, which means one dispatcher. Same with the fire department, the fire chief shares that dispatcher with Nolansville and we share that cost. So that's important as we move forward because I'll reference that here in just a little bit, but we, we thought that was pretty excessive, that we, we had not really done a deep dive into this. We thought that somewhere that seemed to be an excessive cost. So the second thing you have, the, the second is an email from me back to them and saying that we reviewed that and that the 100% increase was possibly not attainable for us, that we thought that that was pretty aggressive and we thought that there was quite a disparity amongst what we were paying compared to our cohorts, which are the other municipalities that pay to have dispatch service. And so the second page of that is a small spreadsheet that I created. It goes back to 2017 when I come on board and, and Chief Hughes come on board. And you can see in the first column, our Fairview PD calls, and it goes from 2017 to an estimated call volume for next year. There's no way to know what we don't know, so we sort of estimate the call volume and, and that worked out about, about a 50% increase. The fire department, same thing, we, we did an increase and we granted him an overage there and it was a 41% increase in call volume theoretically. But over the years of 2017 till 2024, the increase in cost would be 1,327%. So we had a little bit of comparison, we had, we provided some data in that first sheet you saw from Kristi Borden, that Spring Hill and Franklin over the last four years, they had increased 40% and 52%, but in that same four-year period, we were 182% increase. So we, we presented this to them, e-mail, and we got a response. The next page in pink here is the response from Kristi Borden. And the response for me was, was quite problematic. I provided data, real actual data that supported my position. And what I got in return was an email that was quite wordy and it said increasingly apparent that our current arrangement is no longer sustainable due to combined call volume, which I will address here in just a minute. And more importantly, officer safety concerns, of which she references several times in her email, these officer safety concerns. I think that that was a, an attempt to elicit some emotional response because in the business, officer safety is, is very heavily weighted against the decisions we make. But nowhere in this was there any data that supported it. It was just in the next, next paragraph, recognizing we have outgrown the current model where a single dispatcher managed both entities. And nothing really in that is, supports this decision. And, and from her first email, the money we pay is for a person, a body in a seat. So does everyone else that participates in that. Municipalities pay for those bodies in the seat. You pay for it three times. You pay your city, county taxes, you pay for city taxes and you pay the federal tax every time you have a 911 surcharge on, a tax on that. So you're paying for it multiple times. But she then decides to, to support this by Williams County also pays overhead to include technology, utilities, overtime. Well, that's not what you say our money's for. Our money's for a person. And to my, best of my knowledge, those things are also paid with your taxes that you pay in your county taxes. They went in the business to be a 911 center, they, your county tax dollars paid that $37 million bill and you continue to pay those county taxes that support that. So it was kind of thrown in there, but I don't think it supports the argument. So that was her response, which then prompted a meeting face-to-face, which myself and, and Mr. Daughery and the fire chief all attended. And then we provided the next thing that you have in your hands. The first is calls per hour. And she just says that the, the system doesn't work anymore, but if you notice it, Spring Hill Police Department in the far right is 7.14 calls per hour in 2023. If you took the combined, Nolansville PD at 3.3 and Fairview PD at 1.4, I don't think you've overrun that where you're, one dispatcher that sits at Spring Hill's panel is, the call volume exceeds that. It just doesn't, what the argument is that they no longer can handle that volume. The volume doesn't, doesn't show that it's there. So as we dug further, we realized that the next page you have is a paragraph that we share this with Nolansville. Nolansville accounts for about 70% of the calls. The imposition on the, the dispatcher is largely caused by Nolansville, but they want us to share the cost evenly with Nolansville. We're not the problem, we didn't create the problem. So we provided that to them. And then lastly, you'll see a large spreadsheet, and this was the deep dive. This is where we tried to pull every category we possibly could and we didn't try to find categories that simply made us look good. We tried to pull every possible variable we could that just told the story. If you look at the top row of those 2017, that's, that's all Fairview stuff. It's Fairview PD, the fire department's in red, the dispatch fees is joint, that's in black, we have our PD call per hour, you have a, a cost per call, a Fairview, a fire department cost per call. And, and I was fair enough to give every municipality an 8% increase in call volume. There's no way you, again, you don't know what you don't know, so I attached 8% to everybody and figure there's probably growth in, in, in all that. And so Spring Hill is below us, then you have Franklin PD and then Nolansville PD. And we, as it all played out, the most important column becomes the far right. As it stood in that request, Fairview would pay $17.70 per call that was worked. Combined with fire and PD, we'd pay 17.70 per call. Spring Hill would pay $7 a call. Franklin would pay $7.46 a call. And Nolansville would pay $7.76 a call. When this meeting, the, the term equitable keeps being thrown around and I, I said I, I don't see where $10 more a call is equitable to Fairview when I, it did show that Nolansville bears the big imposition here. Their, their response was, do we think we just charge you, you know, the 150 and charge them 350? I said, absolutely, if that's what it takes. But the reality is, the model they work off of is, you know, just doesn't, doesn't become a fair model for Fairview. In that meeting, it, it, you know, we, we tried to plead our case that we felt like this was completely unfair, that we were not, and they said they would take that into So we, Kristi, the next email, she, she responded back, hadn't heard from us. This email again sort of prompts a, let's meet. So we did so. We, we had a teams meeting and Tom was out of town, Arizona, and the chief and I attended this teams meeting. And the new proposal now was to modify the operational stance of the dispatch. And the second page shows their proposal and as it stands right now, we talk about, you know, we, we share those, we're on different frequencies, even though we share that different, that, that dispatcher, I'm on one frequency, they're on, Nolansville's on another, I don't hear them, they don't hear us. And that's not uncommon. That's a doable practice. Dixon County operates, their dispatchers operate Dixon City frequency. They also operate Dixon County to include Burns and White Bluff PDs and stuff, and, and they do that. They were multiple, that's, and we've done this for years in our system here. So the new proposal was that Nolansville and, Nolansville and us would share that again, that during peak hours, when it's really busy, we would have a, an individual dispatcher for each of us. And then the off-hours, they would patch us together, so we would be on the same frequency. And that would, that, based on the rate we pay at $127,000, it would increase to another $30,000. So from my stance, I'm going to pay more money once again, but I'm going to get probably a little less service there. And then the, the last sheet in that was the, I once again decided, well, let's just put it to dollars. And Spring Hill again is $7 and Franklin's at 7.46 and that would put us at 10.80 per call and Nolansville at 4.75 a call. So once again, we're bearing the burden for Nolansville and no one seems to understand that this, this is a hardship on Fairview and unfair. But the reality is if we paid 7.50 a call versus based on our call volume, we would only pay about $180,000 a year. We're actually overpaying, you know, for the usage of that, based on that call. So again, disagreed with that. So we, we settled on that a little bit. Tom went out of town. We weren't really prepared to make a response yet. So, but we were. Bill Jorgensen reached out, they're in the budget planning, we're not at our budget planning yet, but they, they want us to work off their timeline. They're sort of pushing us to make a decision on this and he prompted an email to Mr. Daughery, said, hey, have you made a decision? As you'll see, the, the next email is from me to them. And so I spoke with Tom this morning while he was gone on vacation. We understand that what you're asking, but we believe that we should, we probably need to be transparent to our board and our citizens because Williams County is literally the only game in town. Brentwood does their own dispatch, but I, we have reached out on numerous occasions and attempted to partner with Brentwood and they're not interested. They're not interested in doing anything but their own thing. So we're kind of, we're a barrel. What does that look like for us? It's, it's tough. And so I, I did ask one question at the end of this and it was imperative because I thought it might be a question that you asked. What is the outcome? Should we just say no? What does that look like? And then I got a response from Kristi, again, quite wordy and really didn't answer the question. It says, with regards to your question, the outcome is dependent upon Fairview's decision, but further operational change will be necessary. So really couldn't give me an answer of, what if I just don't pay? Are you going to unplug me and cut me off or, or what does that look like? So really didn't get an answer with that. So my final email addresses that and just says specifically, you didn't specifically answer my question, we'll just seek answers elsewhere. I come to you tonight, not really as asking for a decision to be made, but that I found it imperative, so did Tom and so does Scott, that we share this with the commission and the voters, the citizens that pay those taxes, to say, this is an expenditure that we don't necessarily agree with. We may have to ultimately pay for that, but we want them to know that if we do, we did not do that without doing our homework, vetting the process and understanding that it is, we are unfairly being priced in this. So I, the, the fire chief may also have some input on this, Tom may have. This is pretty much in a nutshell. I don't know that, I, I'll, I'll attempt to answer any questions you have, but I don't know that what I've given you isn't comprehensive and would answer all those questions for you. And. And the only thing we got from, uh, Christie was that they promised next year they would look at the, the process and try to get everybody to the table and make a fair fee. Everybody, I, I, I don't know that giving this and that there's not a lot of concessions made on their part, that I trust that there's just a promise. I think, in my opinion, in my opinion solely, what will happen is they will bring everybody to the table and attempt to reassess those fees. But I think they'll throw everything in the pile besides just people and divide that up and my fee will go up anyway. I, I just, I, I think that's it. So we're sort of, we're sort of stuck in that. But the staff just, uh, we fought that fight and we disagree with it, but we don't know the recourse in that.
Mayor, if I could make a recommendation that would involve you, I think that we should probably get with our two county commissioners and schedule a meeting with Rogers Anderson.
I've already talked to chief about that.
You have the information and like I said, every, the only thing that was not given to Christie or Bill an email chain is the last thing that I, that I printed off, which was those current fees where Nolanville pays four dollars and something. I just threw that in, uh, as I was making these packets the other day. That's literally all of our communication back and forth, with the exception of agreeing on some meeting times. Those, just didn't feel like those needed to be in there. Chief, do you have anything else? I mean, um, it's been, it's been a significant work through. We spent a lot of time on this and we just think that our citizens and voters should know that that may possibly be an expenditure we have to do.
Chief, you and I have had many conversations about this. And you know how I feel. So first of all, you've gone above and beyond to get all the documentation, charts, everything showing Ms. Borden the, you know, how we're being treated unfairly as far as, um, what we're having to pay per call versus everybody else. That, you know.
You know, I, I fundamentally disagree with the fee altogether. Your tax dollars, you, you know, the sheriff runs a jail that all the municipalities participate in usage of that. And I don't get an extra bill when it, when it's a staffing issue. I, I think, um, you know, you, you just don't get those. But if all the other municipalities agree to pay, I agree, we should pay too. There's no doubt, I think we should come to the table as long as all the partners come to the table. We're just asking it's fair.
But it needs to be distributed evenly. And, um, I've, I've, exactly what Commissioner Johnson said, as a last resort, I agree. We need to sit down with the county commissioners and Rogers, uh, our county mayor, Rogers Anderson, and come up with something different. We can't just.
Christie, uh, did say this in the meeting. I think this is what has got them in the position that they're pushing us so hard is they said that Williamson County is not approving any staffing increases across the board for any divisions in Williamson County this year. And they want five positions. They want two supervisors and three, uh, dispatchers. And they told them they could have it as long as they subsidized it.
So they're going to use us to subsidize it?
And as long as people pay for it. And I'm, I'm, I'm still, again, I'm okay as long as everybody's paying. I just agree at the rate which, disagree with the rate which we're paying versus all the other participants. My, my suggestion to her was if I'm paying seventeen something a call, if that's your first ask and they've come down from that, but if I'm paying that, please today, go see Chief Faulkner and tell her her rate is now seventeen something a call and see how that works out. I mean, that's, th- those are astronomical numbers. And you're talking about departments that have budgets that are sixty and ninety and, and, you know, Williamson County several hundred million dollars. The dispatch budget is larger than our entire, entire city budget. And what we, the fire chief kept telling us, like, you have to make it equitable. We want to be a partner, but you understand how much you're punishing the little kid, you know, in the room. It's a bigger chunk of the pile for us than it is on a percentage scale. When you percentage, uh, you scale that out, it's very miniscule to a Franklin PD, but it's a large chunk for trying to do. So, I mean, I, Tom, is there anything that you possibly could add to, to that presentation?
Here again, we've got to be good stewards of our, um, our community's money, our, you know, tax dollars. And I'm not going to agree to anything less than it being fair across the board. And if we have to talk to the county commissioners, Rogers Anderson, whoever, we're going to have to do that because this is, has become a problem over, I mean, tell them what we started at a few years ago, eighteen thousand. And now they're wanting us to pay two hundred and fifty thousand.
Eighteen thousand was probably not in the game. We, we, you know, there was.
Right, and I'm not saying that.
There was an ask, there was an ask that we get to ninety six. That was our goal and it was a step plan to get us to ninety six. The moment we get to ninety six, it moves to one twenty seven. Then it moves the next, the ask is now to double that, three times we've went up a hundred percent.
See, and the problem is there's not some type of a contract in place because they can just willy nilly increase it whatever they want to. And they think because we have no other options. And I actually talked to Mayor Gorman of Brentwood and I said, is there any way that we could, you know, partner with y'all? And they said, no, we, we don't want to partner with anybody. So that's not an option.
Several times.
Accepting this is not something I'm willing to do. So we need to.
And ultimately, you know, we've said this, if somebody tells me I have to pay it, then I have to pay it. But I just felt it was important that we were transparent with the stakeholders of Fairview, that they know that if those dollars have to go there, they know why they had to go there. And it wasn't by choice of staff.
Well, we have to exhaust reaching higher and, uh, talking to more, uh, you know. We, we, we need to reach out and, and speak to the county commissioners and Rogers Anderson first. I, I don't understand why it's okay for us to just accept it being, you know, so unfair across the board, so.
Mayor, I have another question. And I don't know who can answer this. I don't chief or anybody, but you've mentioned the tax dollars that go to fund this. I believe, and I may be wrong on landlines, but I think landlines and cell phones and everything are assessed a monthly nine one one as well.
Federal tax that, that's, that's, uh.
So does that money go to them as well?
I understand it is. I mean, uh, I discussed that. I discussed that with the fire chief before and, and he said that yes, to those funds to go there. So it, it appears, and you know, and I'm not in the dispatch business, so I, I don't know how they recognize those funds, but it appears that they are funded by the taxpayers of Fairview in three different ways. So, and again, if everybody else is at the table paying, if Franklin's paying and Spring Hill's paying and they all agree with that we should subsidize it, I'm in on that too. But my ask to them was please make it fair. That's all I ask you to make it fair.
These charts and she saw it, it laid out in front of her and it was so uneven, she had no comment to that?
The, the answer to that was, well, we'll just move it down to you, you twenty nine thousand more and we'll modify the service a little bit. At some hours, that'll be a lesser service. I mean, it's still twenty nine thousand more. If you had a call, call per, I mean, a, a price per call price, my one twenty seven I'm paying is still, but you're wanting twenty nine more. I mean, you still, you, you're still going up and you're not realizing I, I'm.
I do, I do have something to add. Um, when we were leaving, I told her, um, we did need something in writing. And I told her if she could give me something with a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars a year for the next three years, Fairview would be okay with that. I said, because at the end of that third year, we'd be about where we need to be, to be even with everybody else. And then we could renegotiate our calls. But I said, this is, this, this is, does not work. You know, I realize they need people and they need to find out a way to pay for them. But I, at least let everybody pay the same rate.
The support, the supporting argument to that is, yeah, but we do other stuff. You pay for readiness, but so does everyone else. Franklin pays for readiness at seven dollars and something a call. Spring Hill pays for readiness at seven sixty a call. Apparently Nolanville is going to pay for readiness at four dollars and something a call. So you can't tax me with all these other things when you've already added that in to what you're, you're, you're charging people. It's already, and they're paying county dollars for that. I mean, you just can't decide that that's my justification that you're paying for this other stuff. So was everybody else at the rate per call that they're paying. It just mathematically, we could not find a way where it made sense.
And essentially this is a, essentially this is a tax increase to our community and.
Well, it's, you know, a hundred and twenty something thousand dollars was the first ask. And, and she went to officer safety, officer safety. I said, well, I, I mean, to be honest with you, I've been tethered to a radio for thirty years. And I appreciate, absolutely appreciate dispatch services, they need. But if you're talking about a hundred and twenty something thousand dollars and that's my, that's my mark for officer safety, when that means not ha, that would be two officers on the road. I guarantee you that's more officer safety with more bodies on the street to back each other up than that would be for that service. But am I getting a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars more service that would make them that much safer? That, and, you know, then that, I guess the answer was we'll do them, we, we just need twenty nine thousand more from you. But at one twenty seven, I'm still paying too much. Like you didn't hear me or you didn't see this and I thought that it was evident that the number showed. And, and like I said, when we tried to find categories, we didn't try to look, make ourselves look good. If you look at the four year average of increase in fees, well, Nolanville, we are at a hundred and eighty two percent. They're four hundred and something in four years increase, but their call volume's went up drastically too.
Yeah, Mayor, I have a couple of questions just for clarification. So are we, are our numbers between Nolanville and us reached a limit to where we can no longer split? So we're each paying for our own?
That's, that is what they're wanting to do is to split us and, and provide us one dispatcher each. Now, here's, here's also a problem behind that.
Do they have a number that they state that one dispatcher, like there's a call volume limit?
They don't do it by calls. And here's, here's what's problematic about their model. If you take Spring Hill, for instance, this year and they're, they're seven point four, one four calls per hour and they're comfortable with one dispatcher handling that volume. Okay, what is their mark? They don't tell us what their mark is, is eight and a half calls an hour the max and then they would require another dispatcher? Well, if they do, Spring Hill's call volume went up by a couple of calls per hour or however many that is of an eight hour span or twenty four hour span. But the answer to that is one whole person more. So Spring Hill's fee would go up one hundred percent. Another person for the call volume barely breaking over what they felt like was too much call volume for one dispatcher. But if you look at Spring Hill working with one dispatcher at seven point one four calls per hour and you add ours and Nolanville together.
We're not there.
We don't make that yet. So we're understanding why it's trouble some men too much.
And we're only thirty percent of that, of that hundred percent.
We're roughly five and that's my.
We're only thirty percent of calls. And then if you look at fire, they're wanting to add where's one dispatcher. Well, it's point one five and point one six calls per hour. They're going to have a dispatcher sitting there for hours on end doing nothing.
Well, we've been paid.
Guess is they're going to have a staff member doing nothing that's going to work other, o- o- other control panels. But I'm going to pay for it while they work other control panels. So it's really not my dispatcher all the time. They're just going to work across and, I mean, if I was sitting there with it, I would utilize that person too. That's not a bad business model. If they're sitting there and the fire channel's dead, I'd have more for the fire channels if a call comes in, they need to. So, a- and, you know, they can say, well, again, readiness and if something big happens, we're committed to you. But so are you with everyone else that's on this list for the price that you charge them on this list.
Yeah, we had twelve thousand roughly PD calls in twenty three and about eight, nine hundred more, a thousand more, call a thousand more in twenty, is, I guess, is that predicted for twenty four?
Yeah, the twenty four was a number we don't know what we don't know. So you just, I, across the board, you figure, let's be fair, everybody's like, everybody's numbers are going to go up.
One twenty seven to two fifty six on a small percent increase. And then you look at Nolanville, which their estimated increase is about the same, but they're at thirty thousand calls.
Right.
And then you look at how much, like how many calls per hour are coming? One point five six for Fairview between police and fire, three point four five for Nolanville. Yet, so total calls, thirty two thousand and thirteen thousand. And then you look at the price tag and we're paying the same. So I just don't understand how anyone could look at you with a straight face and justify the cost when it is obvious that it's a service that we're paying for. It's not a flat rate, right? It's a service. How, how can they justify that between?
The problem in that is their model, their operational model where it assigns, a- and that's great, it assigns it. But I think the fire chief looked up a stat that we use, out of all their staff, we use six percent of the service, but you're asking us to pay for fourteen percent of the service. That's another disparity. That's, you know, he, he tried to work a number another way. It's still a disparity. It's still what we're paying.
You basically just get a word solid response when you ask those questions?
They want us to say, well, we're going to just give you another dispatcher and you don't usually use it that much. Nolanville does, but you're going to just share it evenly. When they, the last proposal, when it was twenty nine thousand each, Nolanville, in the teams meeting, they jumped at it. I said, I would too. You know, if I thought, you know, Nolanville's going to carry the burden for me, I would jump on that price too. That's a great price. Let's do that. And, uh, we pretty much said, we have no more comment. We, there's nothing, we have to say this meeting. So, you know, we just find it very problematic.
And then you look at the year over year growth. It's like, at what point are we going to stop increasing year over year?
I think that was, to, credit to Tom was.
Yeah, for a three year stay.
As a, the city manager and had to plan these budgets, I don't know what you're going to hit me with next year. And, and when you're talking a hundred percent increases for Fairview Tennessee, we are in better shape than we've been in a long time. But in that better shape, we have to address a lot of things in the city. There's, there's things that were neglected and not done and need to be done and, and, and solutions and answers to things that we also have to do. We can't devote, you know, all, all of our, our, direct all our funds, you know, in a manner like that that doesn't address the other things we need. We just think it's unfair. I think you see that it's unfair. I don't know that anybody could read through that. And, uh, to date, to this date, I've not got a response back from them saying your numbers are incorrect. All the data that was pulled on call numbers, we pulled it off their system. We didn't make up the numbers. We pulled it directly off their system, plugged the numbers in. And to, to date, they've not said, well, you're just not correct. They've accepted that these are the numbers.
Yeah, it's just, and their numbers are their numbers as far as prices go, right? And so that's basically the stance they're taking.
So it's on the table now. They want one fifty six and some change, I think. And, and we still think, based on that thing I showed you, it's ten dollars and eighty cents a call for us. And we're still not, uh, we're still not even with our, our cohorts.
I agree with Tom. I think we should, um, seek the one twenty seven contract for three years. And then, uh, you know, at that point, we've got a lot of houses being built right now. We can reassess and check to see where our community's at as far as population.
Yeah, it's, it's one of those things that I, I think their model and I can't, you know, I have no control of their operational model, how they want to do things, their management. Uh, I don't think it's, it's caused a problem yet, these other departments. When it does, I think they'll be complaining the same thing that I, the way that I am. If Spring Hill just broke their magic mark where they felt like it wasn't, you know, uh, when dispatcher didn't satisfy that and they went to two and they saw that was a hundred percent increase, I think they're going to be, have problems with that too. Like, we're not really imposing on you, you know, that call, that you would equate to that much cost, you know, one hundred percent increase. I don't think they've seen that. And to be fair, you know, a lot of these communities are a lot, you know, wealthier than us. And when they see these numbers, it's not, often not a big deal. I don't think Franklin bats an eye that their cost goes up a little bit. Uh, you know, when, when you have budgets like that, you see that as, as a very small incremental move and it's, it's no big deal. But for us, it's, it is significant. And when you talk about numbers like that, we, it, you know, it warrants, you know, some kind of action or pushback or something from it.
Well, see, and that's even, that's even disturbing to me that, you know, talking about budgets and they're trying to hit the community with the smallest budget, I would probably say in our Williamson County, with more than double what everybody else is paying. I, I just can't, I can't accept that.
And, you know, I, I, I felt it important to tell the whole story. We're not at the one twenty seven right now. We're, we're at this, you know, twenty nine thousand more, but we're still overpaying. And it was, I guess it was some attempt to make some concessions and, and I guess think that we would feel okay with that. But then when you go back and apply real numbers to it and produce data sets that say, this still is not fair.
And that's what I'm saying. It's more than fair, in my opinion, for us to stay where we're at because we're overpaying right now for the next three years. I think that's being more than fair to them.
You know, we talked about that. I'm in total agreeance that if we could do the, the one twenty seven for three years, then reassess. And it's, it's like anything, you know, your water bill, your gas bill, your electric bill, bill me for what I use. And, you know, don't, you know, these, these, it's just, it's, it's been a tough fight.
The interlocal agreement doesn't have any speak to financials, right? So they've agreed to provide us services, but it doesn't say it would value or cost?
No.
Okay.
I mean, you, your, her proposal's in there, it's attached, and it's just simply just saying, hey, we, we're just gonna alter our operational model, but it's still gonna cost you, uh, half of a person. And then under those non-peak hours, we're gonna just patch you together. That's less of a service we have now. And we've shown through that bar graph, we don't even max out the service of one. We're not to the call volume of Spring Hill. You know, and they have one dispatcher in the seat, us combined, we still don't do that. But, I mean, I, I really think the, the core of this is, they, they want five people in their budget that this county's not willing to give them. And they're, they, they wanna try to fight to get as many of those staff members as they can. They were told to subsidize that, and I think it's, it's, they're doing everything they can to subsidize that.
And they think we're just gonna roll over and accept price?
Or by asking us to subsidize it, basically.
Yeah.
I mean.
I won't agree to that.
I mean.
Do you know, is Thompson Station bundled in these dispatchers since Williams County serves them?
Thompson Station doesn't show any of their dispatch stuff.
Well, 'cause we all pay for Thompson Station.
Does Thompson Station pay anything towards dispatches?
I've not seen any, I don't know if Fire Chief can add that, I've not seen anything. They didn't send us anything, and you'll see the initial report. She sent us the ask, did not include, it only included us, Spring Hill, Franklin, Nolesville, and then their Williamson County, uh, one police, one fire, and one A M S.
That's probably Thompson Station included in the Williams County.
Well, in our urban growth boundary meetings, that was discussed, how all of the municipalities pay for Thompson Station, basically. Because they don't have services, so we pay for their services through Williamson County.
And at what point is three hundred thousand, do we assess, can we take it on ourselves, or is it just?
I mean, you know, it's one of those things, it's a, it's a very, very costly endeavor. It would cost you several hundred thousand dollars, not in the, you know, a million to equip the facility, then you got staffing. You know, you, you can't do it with one person, you're gonna need, you know, multiple people, horse shift, because you have somebody sick, you're not gonna be managing that. It is a cost. Uh, that's why a lot of people don't do it. It's why Franklin doesn't do it, that's, you know, uh, Spring Hill doesn't do it. They, they, they pay for that service.
They, they used to do it.
They did.
Because it was so expensive, they partnered with Williamson County.
And, and I, I did concede to that in the meeting, that, you know, one of the things I, I told Bill George, then just unplug me. And he said, well, you couldn't do all this for that money. I said, I didn't say I could do it this well. I didn't say it would be a great service. It would be, you know, it'd be a poor service, but, I mean, I guess we get walkie-talkies.
But at the rate we're going right now, it'll be half a million in a year.
Right, and that's what I'm saying.
Nine-one call to a cellphone, but.
With our new, with our new, uh, P D, um, can we not look at something, do it in ourselves?
I still think over the long haul, it's not cost-effective. I mean, it is, it is cost-effective to be collaborating as a partner. And that's one thing that Bill likes to throw out, is the partnership, the partnership. I agree with that, too. I think it's not a bad model. That's why all these municipalities are involved in that model. It is, it is equitable, you know, for them. They're, they're getting a good service for a fair rate that's equal or close to equal. If they're partners in this, except for us. And then, like I said, again, after we brought this to them, the new model says, well, your, your price comes down a little bit. It's ten eighty, but Nolesville just dropped down to four dollars or something. I mean, I, great move on their part, they jumped all over it, I was, you know, in that meeting, they.
Can you have an out-of-county partner?
I mean, the, we couldn't right now because the system that we own, the system that we possess, no one around us possesses a system like that. Again, and not, it's not an, an action of the nine-one-one. But the Radio Authority, several years ago, thrust us into five hundred thousand dollars for the radios. And that, again, was a gigantic hit for Fairview. We didn't have a say in that, we don't settle on that board. We didn't have a say in it. And they said, this is the system we're going to, and you got about half a million dollars worth of radios. And we pay thirty-seven dollars a month for every one of those radios, there's a usage fee to that, to that radio board. So, eh, I mean, it's, uh, none, our system, their system, because the big three, you know, Williams County, Franklin, Brentwood, they like really nice stuff, the best stuff you can buy, they can afford that stuff. And when they moved that radio system, that is what they bought. And everybody else that was on that system was at the mercy of getting on board with that. And when we did that, we, we, you know, we ate that elephant the best we could, one bite at a time. We got through that, and then these, these dispatch, with the, the idea that ninety-six was our target, ninety-six thousand was our target range, and we worked hard to get to that aggressively. Those, you see those numbers going up, was an agreement to aggressively get to that number. We got to ninety-six, it went to one twenty-seven. We're at one twenty-seven, it goes to two fifty-six. And that's.
Did, did we reach the ninety thousand number early, earlier than anticipated?
No, on, bottom track. We, we were, you know, we agreed that it would be an aggressive jump in that. And so those early one hundred percent increases weren't, it's something that we agreed to. We agreed to try to get, be aggressive enough. We knew we couldn't do it coming out of twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen. Tom can attest to that. Financials didn't allow us to go straight to ninety-six. It was not something budgetary we could do. Uh, they set that mark and said, this is where we want you to be. We worked very hard to get to that. We got to that, the number went up. And if you look at call volume per that dispatcher in the seat, we, we haven't exceeded where we think it would go over that. They, they say it is. And that's what I asked him when I provided data that said, hey, from a money standpoint, a call standpoint, we don't agree. And her response back was just riddled with a lot of fluff. It was Officer Safety, and we do all this other stuff, like, well, but show me statistically why this is a need and it's imposed upon us, that we have, we're the one that causes this for you. And that, that was never answered.
Or benefit from it such exponentially.
Right, right.
Miss Gordon threw Officer Safety in there to vote strong emotion.
We're dropping this on to you tonight, and, and I said when I laid those, those packets to you, it's gonna cause some frustration. We, we've lived the frustration and worked through that, and, and we still, in that frustration, we wanna be a good partner. We, we absolutely do. But we've asked and shown that, hey, this is how we think we're a good partner, and we're not really imposing upon you. And that's, just falls on deaf ears. It's their version of that that's, that's handed back to us, and so we just.
Well, we need to open their ears and let them know that we're not gonna accept this. So, that's my opinion.
I mean, that's, uh, we, from the staff level, we have done all we can do. We stood our ground, we fought. And at this point, we just felt like we needed to turn it over to the board and the citizens and say, this is what it is. This is the ask. Uh, we don't agree with it, we wanna be a good partner, and we may have to pay that. If we do, we just want our citizens to know that we were resistant to that. We didn't just frivolously pay this without vetting it, or, you know, we didn't roll over on it. We, we fought, tried to get it where it was fair and equitable to Fairview, Tennessee.
The way it, the way it's increased dramatically over the last, over the last few years, if we agree to this, we have no, we have no way of knowing that they won't just ask for another. I mean, it's more than doubling. We, we don't know that it won't, uh, you know, double again. We, we can't let it keep going like this, we've gotta try to do something.
And like I said, that, you know, there, I, I think that if they're gonna get everybody to the table, and I think it, it will no longer be about just a seat that you're paying for. They're gonna, you know, I, I think they'll add everything they can into it, training, everything, and all the stuff that goes with that. And then they'll divide, I think at that point, they'll divide it evenly. But I think my number will still go up because you, you threw everything, it was no longer about a person and a seat. That's, that's where I think it would go. Um, because they've not shown anything in good faith that they hear what we're saying, and we're gonna make a move that's just for you.
Just a comment, that's not really anything, but it, to the point about taxes being paid and all of that. And if we're averaging five calls an hour, it, it just, it's so hard for me to understand how all the tax dollars that go to the county that are collected from Fairview, Tennessee, is failing to cover the cost of half of an employee to make five phone calls an hour. That's just, to get to the number that they're asking for. I understand there's extra to it, but that still seems like a wild number.
All, all the things that we were provided from them was a, their ask, and what they felt about the reason that ask is, is made. It was never supported with any, any data or anything that said, you're, you're wrong. To the contrary, this is, I mean, that's what I said, these numbers were accepted. I mean, I've, they got this stuff a long time ago, and there's never been a dispute that that's the call volume, and that's the price, and that's what it costs. There's never been a dispute to that. They didn't come back and say, hey, we, we reworked this another way, and this is, this is how it is equitable from a price standpoint. Never seen those data points.
And thank you for working so hard on it, digging in.
All right, anything else?
I'll be making some phone calls tomorrow.
Thank you for your time, and, you know, Tom, myself, Chief, with anything you need, you know, questions that might arise, we'll, we'll do our best to answer that.
Thank you so much, Chief.
I believe Chief addressed this, but I'm gonna sit tight. And if I'm questioned, I'm gonna say, our, we've, we've shared everything with the board, and I'm waiting on direction. And if, unless y'all want me to address that differently.
Bye, Tom.
Now.
I think he comes to the meeting as soon as you get it scheduled.
Who?
Tom, I think he needs to come with us.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll call, I'll call, uh, Roger Sanderson tomorrow. 'Cause we need, we need his help and the other two commissioners, if we need them to be involved as well, the county commissioners that represent Fairview. All right. We good? So I'm gonna make a phone call tomorrow, and we'll take it from there. Good? All right. Item number twelve is roundtable mayors and commissioners. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. Both Chiefs, Fire and Police, and all the police officers and all the firemen, I thank y'all for standing up for what should be fair for Fairview. Y'all have got my support. And if his meetings need to be, I am retired, other than a doctor's appointments, I'll be more than happy to attend. First off, I wanna recognize all the park employees tonight. Keith Paisley, Bree Bailey. Get some glasses on, people. Xena Wildman, is that right, Bree? Okay. Justin Tom, Larry Hill, Tommy Peterson, Levi Heathwell. I failed to mention them last, last meeting, so from here on out, I'm gonna start calling out everybody's names. So y'all get ready. I wanna know all you employees. They don't have to be here, but I wanna name them. And I appreciate everyone that's here. Y'all do such a great job for this town, and I want everybody to know that y'all stand up for us. Looking at the, uh, city today, looks like all the grass has been cut. It looks like it's all of a sudden, our town's beginning to look beautiful again, and I really do appreciate it. Anyway, once, once again, I wanna thank all the employees from the management department all the way down for everything that you do for this town. And thanks again, Chief, both Chiefs and the employees in those departments for standing up for the citizens of this town.
Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing, Mike, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner McDonald?
Uh, just overall, good meeting. I, everyone who participated, I thought, had good information and good conversation. You know, sometimes you look at the agendas when they come out, and you kinda have an idea of what kind of, how long the meeting's gonna run or how productive it's gonna be. And I thought, when you looked at this, it didn't really show much, or sound like it was gonna be that substantial of a meeting. But I thought it was a really good meeting, we covered a lot, and I think we made some, had some good conversation. That's all, thank you.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a, a quick thank you to Mayor O'Neill for opening and showing us how to run a meeting this morning. And, um, thank you to the friends, members, and board members, and congratulations on sixty years. Thank you, guys. That's all I have.
Yes, it was exciting to have Paisley O'Neill out here. That's, uh, you know, for, um, I, I was, I asked her when she got here, I said, you're in middle school, right? She's in elementary school. And to speak like she did in front of that many students and, and be elected as their, uh, mayor of their, you know, Fairview Elementary School, that was, you know, a lot of, a lot of kids would shy away from that. So I'm, you know, really excited that she got to come out and, and join us tonight and, and, uh, open our meeting and show us our, and do her speech for us. That was, that was just really exciting. Um, thank you to, uh, Bree and Xena and Richard, um, for such an amazing Easter egg hunt. Um, I was out of town and wish that I could have been here. I try not to miss many things, but, uh, I did keep in touch with Richard. He sent me videos and pictures and good grief. I'm, we're, I tell you, next year, you know, over four hundred kids and three thousand eggs, and I just see it growing bigger and bigger. I thought, you know, it just looked like a great event. And I think next year, we're probably gonna have to have triple the, the amount of eggs. So, um, those businesses out there, let's, uh, help donate to that. That'd be awesome. And then, um, I, I was so excited to have, uh, the Friends of the Library here tonight. Uh, enjoyed their, being a part of their meeting and just, uh, looking forward to their, um, sixty-year anniversary. And, um, just, just reminding everybody of the date and time, and, uh, it being Saturday, April sixth. So just make sure if you, it's, it's posted, if anybody needs to, uh, be reminded of when it is. But I just encourage everybody to come out and see what all our, our library has to offer. Um, you know, I, I know that everyone on this board, and we don't take things lightly. And sometimes we have to make decisions, and it's not always, um, what we wanna do. We would like to, you know, make everybody's dream come true and help everyone, but we are responsible to our community and our taxpayers. And we have to come to some decisions that are hard sometimes. So, um, good discussion tonight, and, you know, we just have to fight the good fight. And this with the dispatch is one, and, you know, I promise you, all of us will fight to make sure that our community is represented and financially, um, we're good stewards of your money. Thank you to the staff. Y'all work so hard, and I appreciate it. And, um, Patrick, the board, both boards. And I just, um, wanna just say, like I always do, let's just keep Fairview beautiful and pick up trash and not throw it out. And just have a, have a great week, everyone. Entertain a motion to adjourn.